The City Council Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, met in council chamber on Thursday, June 20, 2024, at 6:10 PM for the purpose of discussing three zoning ordinances. Notice of this meeting was posted on June 14, 2024, at 10:57 AM. This meeting is being recorded. With us, or not with us, from the OLA committee is Councilor Harvey. Also joining us from the Committee of the Whole is Council President Happworth and Councilor Merkel. With us from the city staff, we have Tom Daniel, Tom Devine, and Amanda Chancola from the Planning Department, Vula Orfanos, and Gail Kubik from the Inspection Services Department. So tonight, we are discussing amending a zoning ordinance by adding Section 8.9 Coastal Resiliency Overlay District, or CROD, amending a zoning ordinance relative to Section 8.1 Flood Hazard Overlay District, and amending an ordinance relative to Section 2.2 districts by adding a new district, Coastal Resiliency Overlay District. And we are going to start out, this, by the way, is the OLA meeting that follows the joint public hearing. We've gotten the recommendation from the planning board, and so this is the step that's taken before it goes back to the council for a vote up or down. So we're going to start tonight with Tom Devine, who's going to discuss a few, a few things, including trying to talk to the emails that people have been getting about one particular item. Tom?
I have just a handful of slides. Recap the process since the joint public hearing, speak to some of the public comments that have come in, and propose a couple minor edits to the ordinance text. I'm going to try to share my screen now. At the joint public hearing at the end of April, we lost our planning board quorum after the first hearing, so we had to do a couple extra steps. But in the end, all the hearings were done, and the planning board made positive recommendations for all three ordinance amendments, and referred them here to OLA. I've been seeing some public comments coming through, and I'm really pleased that the public is engaged a little bit here. But I'd like to speak to the specific comments. The comments seem to have the same theme for all of them that are coming through. One of the concerns is that the revision of the flood hazard overlay district ordinance removes language requiring projects to comply with the underlying zoning. So I'm going back to a slide from the joint public hearing that shows where everything lands after revising the FHOD. That specific provision is moved to the CROD, the requirement that projects comply with the underlying zoning. However, even if that's not explicitly stated, projects have to comply with the underlying zoning. Another concern that I've heard is about losing the requirement in the current FHOD to maintain pedestrian and vehicular movement during a flood event. That is being removed from the FHOD. It won't be in the revised FHOD, but it will be in the CROD. And the CROD will have that requirement into a higher standard. The FHOD only requires pedestrian and vehicular movement during FEMA's 100-year storm without considering climate change. The CROD will require that movement in a site during the 2070 100-year storm. It's a higher standard. I'm also hearing concerns about removing the special permit review that the current FHOD has. So the FHOD in its current form and in its revised form has provisions that are binary, you either meet them or you don't. And my view, and I think it's shared by the planning board members who are on our working group, is that that kind of permit review isn't appropriate for a board or commission where judgment and discretionary decisions are required. It's more appropriate for an administrative permit, because you either meet the provisions or you don't. The CROD, at the same time, will be a more robust ordinance with a more robust review at the planning board with a site plan review. And that, I would say, is more appropriate for a public hearing and a planning board review. I think another concern was that the CROD provisions for resiliency to 2070 flood projections, they're not strong enough if they're just through site plan review. However, the core provisions of the CROD, which are to elevate residential dwelling units above the 2070 flood line, elevate mechanicals, and flood-proof everything below the 2070 flood line, those are not part of the special permit review criteria. Those are requirements of the ordinance that you have to meet regardless of the special permit review criteria. So altogether, this change to the zoning ordinance in three parts gives us more robust review of projects within flood zones and requires resiliency to a higher standard. A couple minor changes I want to propose to the text. In error, we referred for fees to a schedule of fees in the building code, which does not exist, so we're proposing that the fee schedule simply be incorporated into the ordinance. And I know if you look closer, you'll probably find more, but this last review, I found two typos that should be corrected. Councilor Cohen's asking me to go back to what? Sorry, I couldn't hear what the question was.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. Are these reflected in the sheets that we got today? The revisions?
No, because they're new revisions.
Okay.
So, yeah, we would need to... Any other questions before we move on? Okay. Do you have anything else that you want to present?
That's what I wanted to cover to start.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Let me see, let me try to do this. I know they're all kind of related, but on the CROD ordinance specifically, or whatever. We can, we can do this any way you want, and they're so related. Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. I was just taking notes, and thank you for answering all the questions that we have received, so I appreciate that. I just want to double-check that I took my notes right, because I was writing quickly. And the concern about the pedestrian and auto movement, could you say what you had said about that again, just so I can make my notes that you were, it was moved to a higher standard? I just didn't get it. Thanks.
Yeah, it's been removed from the FHOD, because the FHOD has to follow the state model ordinance, and we're sticking, proposing to stick to that, and that's not a requirement from the state model ordinance, but it is still something that the working group and I think the community still wants. So it's, it's in the CROD. And, yeah, the higher standard is that the CROD requires that, that movement to be possible during the 2070 100-year storm versus the FHOD, which is only today's projected 100-year storm.
Got it, thank you. I just couldn't write that best. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Watsonville.
Thank you, Chair. Could you review again for the public how the FHOD and the CROD work together? So which, so you keep saying, you know, things have been moved out of the FHOD, moved into the CROD. Does that ensure consistent application, application under the CROD, or are there instances where some of those things would be worked around because we're in the flood hazard overlay district? Do you know what I mean? Can you just explain for the public so that they understand how these things layer?
Yeah, the FHOD and the CROD, they're both connected because they regulate development in flood zones, but they're also responding to very different needs. So the FHOD is to meet federal and state requirements to maintain our flood insurance eligibility, and we have to follow pretty strictly the state's model ordinance. Whenever we saw it some leeway with that, the state said, no, in order for us to approve it and for you to maintain eligibility for flood insurance, you have to follow the model ordinance. The model ordinance, the FHOD and its requirements, we're required to be pegged to FEMA flood maps that don't incorporate climate projections. So the community wants to have buildings that are more resilient, and we have to do something separate from the FHOD to go above and beyond it. What we're doing to try to be streamlined and have ordinances that don't contradict each other is, you know, we propose to make the FHOD the administrative review through the building department. So partly, it clears the way for the planning board to have its focus on the more robust future flood risk. I don't know if I'm answering your question. Is there anything specific I'm, I'm missing here?
I think you're helping me clarify my question so that you can answer it even more, which, which is, can you give some examples around town as to where we would, the building department would be able to follow administrative review under the flood hazard overlay district versus where the CROD gets activated?
I didn't hear the very last part. Examples of, of what?
Of where we would see the flood hazard overlay district used versus where we would see the CROD used.
Yeah. Because the FHOD is the narrower flood zone, because it's just today's risk, and the CROD is a bigger flood zone because it's future risk, almost every time there's a project within the FHOD, it's going to be, sorry, the other way around, almost every time you have a project, no, now I'm getting, I'm getting this mixed up. Every, almost every time you have a project within FHOD, it's also going to be within the CROD.
This is exactly the question about layering, right? So with regards to the concerns that have been raised, some of which have been now removed from the flood hazard overlay district versus, and then put into the CROD, what I hear you saying is, if it's in the flood hazard overlay district, it is also in the climate resiliency overlay district, in which case the climate resiliency overlay district protections would be applied consistently across all projects.
Yes, but
Okay.
There are some very limited exceptions, because the FEMA model is not apples-to-apples with a 2070 model, there's different methodologies. So there are some rare places where you have something just in today's FEMA flood zone for FHOD and not in the future of CROD. So those places exist, but they're very limited.
And do you, can you tell the public where those spaces are, or where, if there are projects there, or what, what part of the city we're talking about?
There's an area of Winter Island that's in the FEMA flood zone but not in the 2070 flood zone, and that's, well, what I've heard from Woods Hole Group that generated the future model is that although the FHOD, the FEMA model, under predicts future flood risk, it doesn't predict future flood risk at all, actually over predicts today's flood risk in some places. So as a result, you have that spot by the plumber home on Winter Island where there's FEMA's today flood zone but not future flood zone. It's peculiar.
And are there any other notable locations in town that you can think of where that's the case?
Small slices of land upstream on our rivers where FEMA captures the riverine flooding better than the coastal future flood risk model does, but nothing big that really stands out.
Okay. I think that's been a source of real confusion for the public, right? That, that it, by and large, the protections that are being removed from the flood hazard overlay district are still in place. You know, it sounds like, and I am estimating this, nobody hold me to this number, but 95% of the city is sort of protected under the CROD, and that that's how these things layer, that it has to do with the maps predominantly. And, and by and large, any, any development in town will fall under the CROD and be further protected.
I qualify that by saying any area in town within the flood zone.
Right, exactly. All right, that's been helpful, I think. Thanks.
Okay, we will take some questions from the public, and I see we have one person in the room.
Good evening. Justin Woody, Ten River Street. I, I don't have questions, I have to say. I have comments. And so I want to say, first of all, big picture here, that what's being proposed is that, one major thing, you have added standards that are reflecting sea level rise and best practices for development, given that. That's good. I'm not objecting to that. I don't think most people are, most people, that is, who are aware of this at all, and I think most people have no idea of what's going on here. But what I'm objecting to, and I think most people would object to, if they understood that, what's going on here, is that what we're removing is the special permit process. A special permit for the flood hazard overlay district allows the city to say yes or no to a development. They can deny a development. We're removing that, and we're replacing it with a site plan review process, which doesn't allow you to say yes or no to a development or project. What it does is say, allow you to tweak it. We would like you to have more of this and that, and we would like this to be different, and da-da-da-da. It doesn't say yes or no to building in a flood zone. And I would think that all of us who are aware of climate change and building and floods and everything, most of us, I think, agree that ideally we shouldn't be building in flood zones. Why would we be doing that? It doesn't make any sense. So this change, which allows that, which prevents the city from saying no to that, to me, is a bad idea on that ground alone. And I don't think the public at large understands this at all. And frankly, I don't think anyone in the city government has reached out to let people know that that's what this would mean, and so that people could have a meaningful discussion and input on that. And I want to say, too, that the planning board, so I brought this up at, at the joint public hearing. Stacia and I were the only people who spoke. And I made this point then, the planning board, during their deliberations, they never touched on this, they didn't bring it up in the slightest degree, they never mentioned it, they ignored it completely. So the recommendation that you have tonight ignores that, and I hope that you will correct that and actually dig into this and consider this seriously. So we've heard a lot of things tonight, and there's a lot of things that I can't get into. But in terms of administrative process, yes, indeed, what we're looking at here is going to be the administrative process where you can tweak, but you can't say no. And frankly, we as a city should be able to say no. We should have that right to say. The ordinance as it stands now was wisely written. It said, listen, we all recognize that development in flood zones is not a good idea. If we're going to do it, then here are the conditions that it has to meet, and it lays out four. The first two are the most important, that it has to comply in all respects to the underlying zoning, that it has to have adequate safety and convenience for pedestrian and vehicular traffic. Now, I understand the argument that you hear is that, well, this is covered in the new change. It's not, because it's being converted into criteria to be considered, not conditions which must be met. And that's what matters, because when it comes to development in this city, and we see it again and again and again, it's the developers who have the whip hand, and they get what they want. And if you don't have something on the books for the people of the city to stand up to and refer to, or for people like you who sit here, who can point to and say, this is why I disagree with it, and this is why we don't, then it's gone, and the developers get their way. And you don't have to agree with me and my point of view, but I think the people of Salem and you deserve to have things on the books which protect these basic rights and which give us something to point to when we disagree with the development in flood zones. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to have someone from planning address that issue a little bit more, provide more commentary. I do want to say one thing, though, that a lot of Salem properties are within this flood hazard and CROD district, and it's not developers, these are homeowners. All of them are under the same ordinance. And I, you know, I hear what you're saying, but throwing around the word developer as if these are bad things, these are homeowners also that need to comply with this ordinance.
I know that entirely, and that's why, and I probably should have said this, but this is why I'm focused on new development in flood zones. And I understand that there can be conditions for people who have existing buildings in a flood zone, and that they may need to make changes and all that. That's not the concern here. Do you think I'm concerned about somebody who has a home in a flood zone who wants to make changes? No, of course not. We're talking about new development, major changes, major development in flood zones, which is, of course, part of this ordinance. That's what's important, and that's what most people care about, and that's what has the most effect. 75 North Street, for example, where we're talking about putting, how many units? 60-plus units over there? And where we're talking about distilling the zoning and that entirely in one way and multiple ways. At any rate, I will not keep talking, but of course, we all know that, and that's not what we're talking about here. So I'm glad I-
I appreciate, I appreciate the clarification. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. I have a couple of points. First of all, regarding special permits, I served as a chair of two city boards, one for nine and one for seven years, including seven years as the vice chair of the Sustainability, Energy, and Resiliency Committee. And I am very appreciative of people who do volunteer service to the city on these boards. However, boards are inherently political. The person who appoints them, you know, not everyone on a board has expertise, you know, scientific expertise on a subject. And I feel like when it comes to codes, we just passed in January the specialized code, I don't want that to be up to a board. I want that to be up to people that the city has under staff who are trained and experienced in the codes. We have, we spent, you know, nine meetings talking to department heads, and many of them enforce the codes that either the state, the federal government, or the city itself have set up. And some of those go through the council, and some are just at the mercy of, of a higher body like the federal government. So very clear, I'm not for special permitting when the, the concern is, is a code. Something like this is really a code. What we're trying to establish is a code. The other thing is, I want to take issue to this idea that everyone in Salem has the same understanding about building or, or structures existing in a flood plain. I want to specifically talk about two projects where some of the people who are against, who have expressed their concerns about this, these ordinance changes, were against these projects. One is Lee Fort Terrace. Lee Fort Terrace was, the new Lee Fort Terrace took 52 public housing units and now has 124 project-based voucher housing. And in addition, it exceeds everything that we've ever required. Even the parking is above the 2070 flood plain. That's extraordinary, okay? I'm way less concerned about what's going to happen today, you know, when Lee Fort Terrace is built and in the future, than many of the properties that exist, as you said, Chair, that are already existing in flood plains. Pioneer Terrace is a great example. I also want to talk about the residents on Canal Street, the Bertini Project. This is a project that the developer bought, 14 acres, almost 10 of those acres are wetlands. They are completely conforming to the wetlands ordinance and the state guidelines, and actually restoring some of the wetlands. They are spending over $4 million putting tanks under parking on Canal Street to deal with stormwater that we weren't able to address on the Canal Street project. This is 250 rental units, a 20% affordability, in an all-electric, highly resilient and sustainable project, and we need the housing. And it's very unusual to be able to get that kind of affordability. And these are projects that if we, if, if we decide that on balance, that we are going to look only at a very limited view of resiliency and adaptation, we are, we are not going to be able to meet the demands of the city to house the people who live in the city today. So, you know, I'm not saying that I know more than other people, but I've spent a good part of my time in Salem, you know, working on environmental issues and addressing the climate crisis. So I take issue with this idea that everyone in Salem has this view about what we should do with new or existing development on a flood plain. I think most people in Salem don't know what a flood plain is, to be honest. Thank you.
Thank you. So does someone from planning want to address this larger point?
What specifically would you like me to respond to?
Let me see if I can read through my notes. That the site plan review does not allow the planning board to say no to building in a flood plain, they can only tweak, and so therefore, we're, we aren't able to, we aren't able to ever say no to a project within a flood plain.
So this is a question we worked through in our working group, and I'd like to pull up a slide from those discussions. I, I think I touched on, either I or Andrew Gorman from Beals &amp; Thomas, how our work relates to compliance with the MBTA Community Zoning Law. I may, we may have touched on that at the joint public hearing. It'll take me just a second to pull this up. So Salem, as you may know, I think was the first city to comply with the MBTA Community Zoning Law. I think Lexington was the first town. We didn't have to make any zoning changes to comply. However, if we, if we have a special permit review required for multifamily housing development over a substantial part of the city, particularly in the B5 district, which is the zoning district that we use to comply with the MBTA Community's zoning law, we would lose that compliance. So we had to think hard about how we can require resiliency in our zoning ordinance and still comply with the MBTA Community's zoning law. So here, when we were looking at in the working group what to propose for a permit mechanism for the CROD, we compared special permit versus site plan review, and there are two key differences between special permit and site plan review. Yes, a special permit can be denied even with a complete application that meets all of the provisions of the ordinance. Site plan review cannot make a denial in that case. The state considers site plan review to be by right, even though there's a review by a board. The state considers site plan review to be by right, even though there's a review by a board, and to comply with the MBTA community zoning law. But then the working group, Beals &amp; Thomas and the, and staff felt that site plan review is appropriate here for the C-Rod because it achieves all the other things that special permit review would achieve. So the project must comply with C-Rod requirements, whether it's a special permit or a site plan review. And like I said earlier, the core requirements of the C-Rod, putting dwelling units above the 2070 flood zone, and mechanicals too, and floodproofing everything below it, that's required regardless of the site plan review. That's a zoning ordinance requirement. Of course, both permit options have the planning board review. There's a public hearing with legal ad and a butter notification, peer review available, custom review criteria through the C-Rod site plan review, just as there would have been through a special permit review. Through either mechanism, we can impose reasonable conditions, and we can deny a project if not all of the required information is provided. So it's a robust review. It requires compliance with the core resiliency standards, and it keeps the city in compliance with the MBTA community's law. I would go further and say that it strikes a thoughtful balance between the housing crisis and the climate crisis. We don't take on any one challenge in a vacuum. Everything we do to work toward one community goal, resiliency, housing, equity, whatever, has to be mindful of all the other goals.
Okay, and it has to comply with the underlying zoning as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further questions? See if there's anyone else.
I have one, Chair, sorry.
Counselor Watson felt.
Thank you. Another item that was raised by Mr. Woodyer that I'm wondering if you could speak to is this idea of what needs, what's being taken into consideration versus a, considered a requirement under the C-Rod. So all of those things, can you talk about that concern that he's raised and identify any of the items in there that could potentially, what am I trying to say, that could potentially not be upheld by the decision under special review and therefore not technically being compliant with the level of protections we're looking for? Can you talk through that?
Yeah, so the C-Rod has some requirements through site plan review, things that have to be considered, that are not in the FHOD examples are trying to maintain pedestrian connectivity to the street in the architecture of a resilient building, minimizing the, the visual impact of mechanicals that have to be raised so that they're not ugly. But those are things that are kind of like a back-and-forth discussion between designers on a project team and the planning board. And it's not, you have to do X, Y, and Z, but it's, they have to be considered in the review. So site plan review results in those things being better than they would be without site plan review. But it is the nature of site plan review to have that review criteria for things to be considered. And that is, that is the difference.
So to be clear, someone could say, yes, we considered it, and we did a review, shadow study, or whatever the case may be, but we've decided to present X and therefore took it into consideration, and therefore they are in compliance, even if, you know, we don't get necessarily something that we want or we're looking for?
For these ancillary concerns, aside from the core requirements for resiliency for residential units and mechanicals to be above the 2070 floodline, and for everything below it to be floodproofed. So, you know, requiring that for a building can lead to challenges with the design and how a building interfaces with the street and the neighborhood. So the, yeah, the lesser standard, the site plan review criteria, is the opportunity to work through those, through those things, but the resiliency is, is held more sacred and separate from that review where it's just, work with us to try to do these items better. The resiliency is required. But I guess I would add, yeah, the site plan review and the C-Rod ordinance, clearly, it's what the working group intended, it's what we see as a community goal, is to allow development within areas subject to future projected flood risk, but under these standards, having to be resilient, and going through this additional review to make sure that the design works. And that's where I go back to where I think this is an appropriate balance between the need for development that advances the community's goals, housing, economic development, other things, and the need to be resilient to future flood risk.
Watson, Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. Not being a member of the committee, I just wanted to thank everyone for the extensive amount of work that went into this. And I really appreciate all the information in tonight's meeting. It was, it was very helpful. And I really appreciate the discussion on striking a balance between the housing crisis and the climate crisis. And I also appreciate the extensive, you know, review process that has been, you know, explained here tonight. But also that we need to work, you know, every location, as you touched upon, has different challenges, and you still have to, you still have to work with projects, you know, they, they're fluid, and I think this really does set, you know, set the stage for a responsible, you know, mindful process to consider, you know, the, you know, the, the housing crisis and the climate crisis. And I appreciated, you know, Counselor Cohen's, you know, comments, you know, when you, when you look at the Canal Street projects and other projects that sometimes we can have developers paying for infrastructure and, you know, flood mitigation efforts, you know, with the tanks that are getting put in here. So, yeah, I just wanted to offer that I think there's a lot of good stuff in here, I do, to, to, to move the needle on the crisis, on the crises we have, to, to very, very large looming ones that we're facing, and we can, you know, we can, we can move forward. Thank you.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. Counselor Watson felt had asked for some examples, and I want to give a couple. One of the things that's missing in some of the dialogues that we've received is the importance of the stretch code enhancements and specialized code that go into effect on July 1st. You know, and those are more from a sustainability side, but unless we are more sustainable, we can't estimate how resilient we, or, you know, we need to be, to be, to simplify that. The specialized code for buildings that are 12,000 square feet or more that are residential have to conform to passive house design. And the reason I bring that up is if you look at, just as an examples, the two buildings that the CDC completed recently, the lighthouses, one is on Peabody Street, one's on Levitt Street, they were not required to do passive house design. They did. And if you look at those, so not only is passive house design a significant improvement in the, in the, in the code, in the materials, and the, and it's not just design, in how the buildings are built, but there are no residents on the first floor, okay? This is really key in this ordinance change. And I, you know, I would go further on everything. We passed a green building ordinance three years ago, only for municipal properties. I would have taken a lot of that to other properties. But, you know, although this is limited in the size, the number of units per building that are affected by this, I do feel very strongly that those two buildings are really examples of what this ordinance change is going to elicit for the city, what it is going to mandate. And, you know, it's, this isn't just an idea that we should just say yes or no. I mean, I, I kind of take a little bit of offense to this yes/no thing because the idea that we're never going to build anything. Almost all the building, all the developments that are in the queue, whether it's something that's already been permitted, like Lee Fort Terrace or the Canal Street project, or other ones in the queue, more than half of them involve a significant amount of affordable housing. And I just want to be clear about that. I don't want to eliminate properties that can be built in a resilient way that will protect the people who live there in the neighborhood for an extended period of time and limit how much affordable housing we have in the city. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Would somebody like to offer an amendment? We are done with public comment. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Chair. I didn't write them down as quick. You did.
I can help you through them. Okay.
Okay.
We have, we have the two amendments from the planning department. The correction of the Scrivener's errors, changing the word weight to height in two different, two different places. And then also the permitting fees, replacing 8.1.8 with a new 8.1.8 that says permitting fees, fees for FHOD permits shall be paid as follows. One, request for determination of non-applicability, $25. Two, FHOD permit, $300.
I move that we accept those amendments as the chair read them.
Counselor, Counselor Cohen moves that we, moves to approve the two amendments offered by the planning department, seconded by Counselor Watson felt. All those in favor? The matter carries four to zero. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. We have three ordinances in front of us. Counselor Cohen.
I'm getting laryngitis. Thank you, Chair Marcello. I move that we refer the Section 8.9 Coastal Resiliency Overlay District to the full council with a positive recommendation.
Second. Counselor Cohen moves to, to refer the 8.9 C-Rod ordinance to the, to the city council with a positive recommendation for first passage, seconded by Counselor Watson felt. All those in favor? The matter carries four to zero. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. I move that we refer 8.1 Flood Hazard Overlay District, FHOD, with the passed amendments to the full council with a positive recommendation.
Second. Counselor Cohen moves to refer the 8.1 Flood Hazard Overlay District as amended to the full council with a positive recommendation for first passage, seconded by Counselor Watson felt. All those in favor? The matter carries four to zero. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. I move that we refer the ordinance to amend the Salem zoning to establish the Coastal Resiliency Overlay District, Sections 1 and 2, to the full council with a positive recommendation.
My second. Counselor Cohen moves to refer Section 2.2 districts by adding the new district, Coastal Resiliency Overlay District, to, to the full council with a positive recommendation for approval for first passage, seconded by Counselor Watson felt. All those in favor? The motion carries four to zero. Counselor Davis.
Oh, shanujar.
Counselor Davis moves to adjourn. All those in favor? The motion carries four to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you to the staff for being here and for answering all the questions.